Hopefully the others could, could come in soon. Alright, so good evening again everyone. It's nice to have, to have you guys again and to see some of your faces. Welcome to another night of building a godly home, a vision for family life. We'll begin with a word of prayer and let's ask God to help us and to even help those who are coming, coming to the study. Let's pray. Father in heaven, we give thanks for this night. We thank you Father that we can resume our studies on domestic godliness. And we pray Father that you would help, help us as we dig into your word once more and see what you instruct us regarding domestic godliness. Father, we pray that you would guide us and you would help us understand your word clearly. We pray that both the teacher and the listeners would be granted much grace from you and help us even with the practical concerns like the internet connection, the focus that's needed with the online dynamics of having a session. We pray Father that nothing would hinder us from truly benefiting from this night's study. Thank you Lord for tonight. We pray that you would bless us. In Jesus' name, amen. Okay, welcome to our studies on domestic godliness or building a godly home. We will continue this very important topic about the Christian home and how the, the home of every Christian should center on God's word and as we have been seeing, center on Christ's work. In our study on domestic godliness or building a godly home, we've been emphasizing that this is not a side issue. This is not just a good optional priority. You could choose to have it or not. No, this is something that God himself is concerned of. This is something that God expects every Christian to take seriously. And we're going through the work of William Gouge on domestic godliness, this Puritan who is expounding the texts of scriptures Ephesians 5 and Ephesians 2, Ephesians 6. And we've been seeing how according to the argument of Ephesians 5 to 6, that the Christians' reception or his experience of salvation should produce in him or in her the urgency and the priority of living out his Christian life and living out the salvation he receives in the home. This is not a marginal issue and this is something that we have to always emphasize because we live in a world that really looks down on the, the home life of people. Looks down on men that focus on building the homes. Looks down on women that prioritize and center their schedules on the home. And so we, we badly need this message on building a godly home. Now, let's begin by reading afresh the text, the main text in Ephesians 5 so that it is still clear in our minds what the argument of the apostle Paul is there. Let's begin in verse 22 of Ephesians 5 and we will read all the way to the early parts of chapter 6. Beginning in verse 22, wives be subject to your own husbands as to the Lord. For the husband is the head of the wife as Christ also is the head of the church. He himself being the Savior of the body. But as the church is subject to Christ, so also the wives ought to be to their husbands in everything. Husbands, love your wives just as Christ also loved the church and gave himself up for her so that he might sanctify her, having cleansed her by the washing of water with the word, that he might present to himself the church in all her glory, having no spot or wrinkle or any such thing, but that she would be holy and blameless. So husbands ought also to love their own wives as their own bodies. He who loves his own wife loves himself. For no one ever hated his own flesh, but nourishes and cherishes it, just as Christ also does the church. Because we are members of his body. For this reason, a man shall leave his father and mother and be joined to his wife, and the two shall become one flesh. This mystery is great, but I am speaking with reference to Christ and the church. Nevertheless, each individual among you also is to love his own wife even as himself. And the wife must see to it that she respects her husband. Children, this is chapter 6 now, children obey your parents in the Lord. For this is right, honor your father and mother, which is the first commandment with a promise, so that it may be well with you and that you may live long in the land. Fathers, do not provoke your children to anger, but bring them up in the discipline and instruction of the Lord. Slaves, be obedient to those who are your masters according to the flesh, with fear and trembling and the integrity of your heart as, as to Christ. Not by way of eye service as men-pleasers, but as slaves of Christ, doing the will of God from the heart, serving with goodwill as to the Lord and not to men. Knowing that whatever good thing each one does, this he will receive back from the Lord, whether slave or free. And masters do the same things to them, giving up threatening, knowing that both their master and yours is in heaven and there is no partiality with him. Now we see here broadly that the apostle Paul points out different roles and different members in the household. And the apostle Paul clearly shows by the inspiration of the Holy Spirit what is expected of each family member in the home. From the wives to the husbands, from the parents, from the children to the parents and parents to the children, even at that time when slaves were in their homes, the slaves and their relationship with the master. So this instruction is really grounded on the gospel realities that the, the Christians who it was first written to were established in. Showing us that doing or pursuing a godly home should always center in the gospel. Now we have already been looking at the role specifically of the husband and how the husband is to pattern his love and commitment to his wife according to the ultimate example of Christ's love. And we see in the text that the apostle Paul is making a comparison between Christ and the church and the husband and the wife. And we are specifically in the part of the book where the author, William Gouge, is expounding with so much detail and with so much paragraphs, sentences and pages, what the love of Christ is and how the love of Christ is expressed in the context of salvation for the church. He loved the church and gave himself up for her. And we have been making the consistent note that the love that a husband has to give to his wife and the goal of the, the, the husband's love, the maturation of the husband's love should be that it is conformed to the way Christ loved the church. So we've been seeing that it was a self-giving love. Christ loved the church and it's displayed in his giving of himself. This love for the church is also seen in that Christ by giving himself for the church sanctifies the church. And so we drew out the application that husbands ought to be self-giving and self-giving for, with the purpose of helping our wives grow in the Lord, their sanctification. We extended that application because not only are husbands expected to love in the home, but wives also and other family members are expected, as is true for all Christians, to love one another, especially to love those who are in the home. So just broadly, that's what we have been looking at. Tonight, we will continue the, the focus on what the apostle Paul says about the love of Christ and how, and what this love, the love of Christ accomplished for the church and how that should inform our own love in the home. Alright, so let me just give you the main points and then I will point out the scope of tonight. Number one, of the fruition of Christ's presence in heaven, of the glory of the church in heaven, of the church's freedom from all deformity in heaven and of the perfect purity of the church in heaven. So notice the consistent word there, heaven, 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 heaven. And so we're going to be looking at how Christ's love impacts the eternal destiny and the eternal condition of the church. Now if you were paying attention when I, in the GC, in the group chat, when I gave the assigned pages, that I skipped some pages, right? I'm not sure if you noticed that I skipped some pages. And I said this at the introduction of this study, that I will exercise freedom to choose what to focus on so that we can focus on, with, with the time that we have, no? We could focus on the things that could, could really benefit us directly. The pages that I skipped were the ones, the arguments of the author regarding baptism. If you notice, he, this is coming still from the, the text, sanctify her with the washing of, with the washing and with the word. And the author spent so much time about baptism and the importance of baptism. And I skipped that, not because I don't think baptism is important or understanding what the washing of God means, not that. But we, we go here so that we could as soon as possible arrive at the author's more direct writing about domestic god, domestic godliness. So that's my reasoning behind my choice of the pages. But let's get started with the main text, alright? And this is the main text Ephesians 5:27. So we, we read Ephesians 5 and 6 earlier, but this is the specific verse we're going to focus on tonight. It reads that he might present to himself the church in all her glory, having no spot or wrinkle or any such thing, but that she would be holy and blameless. Now notice that this is still in connection to Christ's love. And this shows us what the effect or what the blessing of Christ's love accomplished when he gave himself to the, for the church is in Ephesians 5. Notice when it speaks of Christ's love, love the church and gave himself up for her so that he might sanctify her. And then verse 27, notice the purpose of that sanctification, that he might present to himself the church in all her glory. Now there's an important link here theologically that I'll just mention quickly. The author mentions it, but it's not going to be the focus tonight. Those whom Christ justifies and those whom Christ sanctifies, we see that in verse 25 and 26, will be also glorified, alright? That's what that teaches. The, the purpose, notice that he might sanctify her with the washing, by, by the washing of water with the word, that he might present to himself the church in all her glory. So this shows us the unbreakable chain that those whom Christ saves, justifies them and then takes them on a lifelong experience of sanctification, will also be glorified, alright? And none of those whom Christ saves will miss glorification, right? And so the focus of this text is the condition of the church when she is now without wrinkle and now without blemish glorification. The future, the future condition and destiny of the church. And of course, again, it's all linked to the source because Christ loved the church and gave himself for her, verse 25 to 26. And so here we have the fruition of Christ's presence in heaven, alright? Now the, the, the focus here is on the phrase that, cry, this, this phrase, let me just flash it again, that he might present to himself. Notice that in the beginning of verse 27, that he might present to himself. So he is making the church ready, alright? As he will present the church to himself in all her glory by the merits of Christ and because of Christ's work. And so here, this speaks of the glorious state of the church when the church will finally be presented to Christ, alright? And she will be presented to Christ glorious. And this means that as she is presented to Christ, it, it will be in the condition where the church will be rid of all deformity, deformity due to sin, spot and wrinkle, and will be bestowed, will be adorned with beauty and glory, holy and blameless. And so the first thing the author says is that the church will be presented to Christ. The word, I'm quoting the author now, the word present is taken from the custom of solemnizing a marriage. First the spouse was wooed and then set before her husband, that he might take her to, to be his wife. Thus Eve was presented by God to Adam, that he might take her for his wife. And Esther among the other, among other virgins was presented to Ahash, Ahash Varos, Esther 2:13, to be presented as her wife. So the picture here of the church being presented or given to Christ is a picture or the language of marriage. And we know this, right? In, at the end of the book of Revelation, where it speaks of the vision of the marriage supper of the lamb, where it paints with such a glorious picture that when the church finally meets her Savior in glory, it is likened to the, a marriage supper. And so this means that the church will be before the presence of Christ. The church shall enjoy the presence of Christ in heaven and in the new heavens and the new earth. The author so fitly points to passages like John 14:2 to 3, where Christ speaks a word of comfort to his disciples and he speaks about preparing a place for them. And so this shows us why the apostle Paul in Philippians 1:23 and 2 Corinthians 5 verse 8 was very eager to depart from the body and be at home with the Lord. Because the church, the believer, the saint, has this as his inheritance, that he will be before the presence of Christ, where the psalmist declares, I believe it's Psalm 16, "In your presence is fullness of joy." So the author focuses on this showing us that the love of Christ, when he gave himself and sanctified the church, and this assures the church of glory, of being glorified, alright? Its great blessing is because the church will be before the presence of Christ. So here's the quote, "Can the thought of death be terrible, that such as know and believe the truth hear of? Will not rather the consideration therefore make them with the apostle, to sigh and to desire to depart, that they may be with the Lord." So this ultimately shows us the great comfort and security of the Christian. That death, yes, is still terrible and it's not in itself to be desired. But we know, if we are in Christ, we know that death will simply be a doorway, alright? It would be, it will lead us to, to, to the blessings that Christ has assured us and we enjoy that in his presence. It's very fitting that the scriptures describe death as sleep. The saints but sleep, because we will wake up one day before the presence of God should we, when we die. And so the fruition of Christ's presence in heaven is the inheritance of the church. And that's all, that's all derived from that phrase, this one. That he might present, this one, that he might present to himself the church. Present to Christ the church. So that's the first, the fruition of Christ's presence in heaven. And the author continues, alright, comments still on the same verse of the glory of the church in heaven. The church is presented to Christ, but the church is also described in Ephesians 5:27 as expecting a glorious transformation when the Lord presents her, presents the church to himself. And we see here that the church will be described with all beauty, calmliness and grace. So I take those words from the chapter itself. It says, the author says, "In this respect, the saints are said to shine, and that as precious stones, yea, as the firmament, as the stars and as the sun, and to be like Christ himself, 1 John 3:2, and to appear with him in glory." And so the church will be glorified when Christ comes. The church is described as the firmament, Daniel 12 verse 3, like the stars shining. And it, it's very interesting if you read the end of the book of Revelation, when it speaks about the new heavens and the new earth and the new Jerusalem coming down as a bridemaid ready for her husband. If you study that more closely, it is actually a description of the church through imagery, showing the glorious condition the church will be in because, again, where it all comes from, because Christ loved the church and gave himself to her. This will be true both in soul and in body. With regard to souls, saints will be perfected, and I'm, I'm using the author's words, in knowledge, wisdom and all manner of purity, and their body will be fashioned to Christ's glorious body. That's the argument of 1 John chapter 3, diba? When we see Christ, we will be like him. We will resemble the glory of the Savior. And therefore this, again, the author says, is this, is not this sufficient to uphold us against all the reproach and disgrace which the world layeth upon us because we are of the church of Christ? The author in, in this question says that the world will hate the bride. The world will not welcome readily the Christian and the gospel. And they reproach the church, they look down at the church. They compare the church with the great accomplishments of empires and all the, the big names in history and in the history books. And they say, ah, the church, it's just insignificant, small, obscure. But in the eyes of God, that is not so. And one day, it will be made manifest in glory. And all of that will be an opportunity for us to exalt in the love of Christ, that we can say, see how great he loves the church and it will redound to his glory. Because we have to remember, and this was a point, I think, two, three sessions back, that the idea of Christ loving the church and sanctifying her points to the fact that without Christ's redeeming love, the church is unsanctified. The church is defiled, the church is dead in her sin, without Christ's sanctifying love. And so this should, again, exalt the glory of the Savior, that he could transform such a wretched sinner, group of sinners, to become this glorious bride. And so we see that presented to Christ, the church will be transformed. And this transformation also points to the absence or the freedom from all deformity in heaven. And that's the next point of the church's freedom from all deformity in heaven. And the language of Ephesians 5:27 is no spot or wrinkle, no spot or wrinkle. I quote the author as he comments on these words. Um, the words spot or wrinkle, moment, spot or wrinkle. The word translated spot is taken for a stain on a garment and a foul speck on a man's face, the word spot now, or other part of the body, or a scar, or other blemish in his flay, in his flesh by a sore, wound, blow or the like. So that's what a spot is like. Think about the, the, a leper who has deformities in his skin and it's, it's just a, a spot, a blemish on him. And the other word wrinkle is taken for a crease, I'm, I'm using the author's words again. A crease on the face through old age, for it signifies a gathering together of skin by old age, by it meant any manner of breaking as we speak, with sickness, trouble, pain or the like. Now we know that it speaks of sin, alright? So it's not the ridding of a physical spot in itself or a wrinkle, although as we saw also, our bodies will be glorified. But this freedom from deformity is mainly a freedom from sin, no more sin. The ultimate indication or meaning of the spot, wrinkle and blemish is a moral blemish. In fact, the reason why we have physical blemishes, spots and wrinkles is owing to sin. And the saints will be rid of all that is, that blemishes us. All remaining sin will be removed. And so that is part of the glory of the saints that we could expect. And I, I should ask you, how often do you think of these things? When you battle against sin, when you try to develop Christlikeness by the grace of God through the means of grace, do you realize that you are not fighting a losing battle? You're not. If you're truly a Christian, huh? If you're truly a Christian, not a hypocrite, not one who's playing around with church or Christianity, truly a Christian, you are not fighting a losing battle. We will see this as part of the application later, that it will, it should provide so much encouragement. And this reality of freedom from spot and wrinkle reminds us of the heavenly happiness. The author says, "The consideration of this benefit cannot but breed in the hearts of all such as are members of this church, of his church, a longing desire after this perfect purging of them from all deformity." And why? Why do we desire that? Because it is part of our enjoyment of Christ. It becomes an occasion for us to glory in Christ. And so this, again, it's so profound, that's the argument Ephesians 5:25 and then 26, what this love of Christ accomplished for the church when he gave himself for her. Sanctify her with the washing and the water of the word and making her have this blessed hope. So what, what does this have to do with the Christian home, right? After all, that's what we are studying, domestic godliness. How can this instruct us for domestic godliness? Since this teaches us that the love of Christ is the reason for the sanctification of the church. Because Christ loved the church and gave himself up for her. And since Christ gave himself so that the church would be made new. And ultimately be come, be glorified. This teaches us the nature of Christian love. Christian of number one strives for the sanctification. Applying the immediate context of your wife. And by extension, even your family members. If you define love as devoid of sanctification. Uh, growth in holiness conformity to Christ. If you define love apart from that, it is not truly Christian love. Because that's the point, right? Husbands love your wives as Christ love the church. And then he describes how Christ loved the church. And so by studying how Christ loved the church. It shows us how we are to love our wives and by extension, our family members, the other family members. And so, of course, it doesn't mean we will be the saviors of our wives, that can never happen, and that's not the point. We cannot be the ones who affect sanctification in the lives of our family members. We cannot, we are not God. However, our love and our self-giving. And, 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 and our goal even for the home. Is that they would abide in Christ, because that's the only way they get sanctified. And if there are unbelievers in the home, of course evangelizing to them. And for those who are believers in the home, Christian, uh, Christian. Uh, Christians in the home, then your greatest desire, if you truly love them, right? First, of course, the main application husbands to wives. And even the, your, the other family members of the home, if you truly love them, your concern will really be. Promoting growth and sanctification in their lives as you point them to Christ. Alright, it is, it, it, it's more important than all the gifts you can give them, all the opportunities you can give them. All the vacations you can give them, you list again, and um, all the, the things. This world, you know, defines as wow, ka-loving, wow, ka-generous. It is this lifelong, lifelong uh, effort. To, to, to love them for their personal sanctification. And therefore, this calls for the centrality of God's word in the home, remember the argument of the apostle Paul. Sang, uh, Christ loved the church and gave himself up for her, that he may sanctify her by the washing of water with the word. Alright, so Christ's instrument for the church's sanctification is the word. Alright, it's made clear in Ephesians. Therefore, to make number one specific, right? This love, how does this love um, for their sanctification uh, uh, express itself specifically? It will be expressed here, centrality of the word in the home. This means that God's word, since it is the means of sanctification, Ephesians five twenty six. We should do everything we could. To let our family members be washed with the renewal of the word. So this calls for what, what are practical ways to do that? Of course, family worship, right? Uh, the, the, the reading of scriptures together, the speaking of scripture together. Um, this uh, calls for being intentional about your conversations. Um, when you share meals together, you know, what is it that you focus on when you talk? Are you intentional? Do not think that it would just come automatically, many days, you will have to really plan it. Right, especially if you're the head of the household, you really have to plan it. No, because it's more natural for us to talk about the latest game, the latest trend. The latest calamity, the latest this, the latest news, the latest, so many, many, many things. But when it speak, when it comes to the word, alright, it, it's almost no energy or no time for it. It's, it's, it's crazy, sometimes people say, it, it, we're just so demanding man good, we're so busy man good. There's just so many things, but when you look at the actual time that you could have talked about the word. Or have family worship or family devotion. It, it, there, there's so much more time given to, to other things. But if we truly love one another and if we want to grow in our love for one another as we pattern it according to the love of Christ. We love because he first loved us, if we pattern it according to that. Then it should drive us to let the word be more present in our homes. And so, the next point is of the perfect purity of the church in heaven, right? In fact, this is uh, the, the final point. Now, this is still part of the uh, passage or of the text Ephesians five twenty seven. And it speaks about uh, still the glorification of the church. When the church will um, experience perfection and glorification. Alright, uh, the author says, the sanctification of the saints shall be perfect in heaven. They shall not only be justified by having their sins covered to them. Nor only have their sanctification truly begun in them. But also in every part, point and degree, therefore absolutely perfected. In which respect they are said to be just men, just men made perfect, Hebrews twelve twenty three. Again, speaking of the glorification that the, the, the believer will experience. And therefore, it is perfection good. No, uh, there, there's really, really rid of sin. The author encourages us to have an eye to this perfection. It's very important note. He says, in our endeavor after holiness, let us have an eye to this perfection. Meaning let us focus on this and not faint. If we attain not to that measure which we desire, perfection is reserved for the world to come. Yet know we, that the more holy and blameless we are, the nearer we come to the heavenly estate. The more spots and blemishes of sin we have, the more unlike we are unto it. And the less hope we have of enjoying that heavenly happiness. The point of the author, when he speaks of having an eye to this perfection, is when we look at this as our hope. That one day we will be glorified and perfected, right? Let this be a, a means to fuel our endeavor to grow in sanctification and holiness. I've mentioned it earlier, that our battle with sin and our striving to grow in sanctification. Is not a losing battle if we are in Christ, it's not. Because Christ does not, he did not shed his blood in vain. There is no saint that he redeems that will not be glorified. And so the scriptural, the biblical response to that is to strive even more, alright? Not to say, because the unbiblical response to that is the issue of Jude three, taking the grace of God for licentiousness. And you say, I'll be glorified anyways, I don't need to strive now, no. But because our growth in holiness in this life is part of what Christ has purchased for his people. Our actual experience of holiness. So since that's a reality, therefore we ought to make this hope. One of those things, those truths that fuel us to strive more and more toward holiness. And so the point here is, this should really encourage us and instill in us a great hope. And that's where I conclude a final consideration. Since this is a great hope, fellow believer, since this is sure, a sure hope. This should be a great source of encouragement in our struggle for domestic godliness. We have to be honest, alright? Pursuing domestic godliness brings with it serious challenges, right? There will be many things that could discourage you and many things that could tempt you to quit. In your efforts for domestic godliness, there are, right? In your own self, your own failure, in the unresponsiveness of others around you possibly. Whatever it may be, uh, ha- having a bad start or losing a good start. So many things that could make us, you know, discouraged. But knowing that there is a great hope for every Christian. This hope of being glorified and being presented to Christ, it should encourage us to pursue domestic godliness with more fervor. Especially if your family members are Christian, especially that. Because if they are truly in Christ, this means that that hope is also true for them. That they also will one day be perfected in glory before the presence of Christ. And so, again, it is not a losing battle for you in your striving for growth in godliness. And it is also not a losing battle for those who are in Christ or home, right? Because I, I think we know it's not a mystery that it is those of our household. That see our sin the most, right? They, they, they see you in your lowest times, they see you in your unguarded times, your tired times, your sick times. And your sinful tendencies tend to go out. Your impatience, your laziness, all, you name it. And it could be discouraging for you and for them. But this hope should help us get back on our feet. And, 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 and gird up our loins to, to, to do all that we can by the grace of God. And availing of the means that God has given to strive for domestic godliness, right? Because, again, it all goes back to the sure foundation of the love of Christ. And how Christ gave himself for his bride. And when there, and if there are those that are not Christian in the home, right? Really see, see them good as those who you should share the gospel to. Hmm, uh, as, as the Lord provides opportunity, you're, you are their closest neighbor. Share the gospel to them, no matter how young, no matter how old they are. You have to share the gospel to them, because if they can, i- if, if they are to have this same hope that you have, if you're a Christian. It will only happen in Christ. And that only happens through the gospel. So the author says, in closing, all the forenamed several points of the glorious estate of the church in heaven. Should ravish our spirits and even break our hearts. With a holy admiration of Christ's goodness. And fill our mouths with praise for the same. And make sigh and long after the same. And with all good conscience and diligence, use all the means we can to attain thereunto. No labor will be lost herein. Very, very moving words, right? Moving words, and the note is that it should uh, ravish our spirits, it should make us. Yeah, um, have this rising holy expectation and desire. And even break our hearts with an holy admiration of Christ's goodness. Showing, uh, showing us that how, how, how really complete and sufficient a Savior is in Christ. That he does not only begin or does not only continue a work in the believer. But he will assure the perfection of that work. And so, filling our mouths with praise for the same. Praising Christ, thanking Christ, adoring Christ, making us long to see Christ. And then fueling us to be diligent, to use all the means to grow more and more in domestic godliness. So the Christians' pursuit, alright? The Christians' pursuit to, to build a godly home is filled with so much hope. And so much joy, we can, we can uh, gle, uh, we can derive from the assurance of the gospel. So that concludes tonight's study, let's um, close with a word of prayer and then we can entertain questions or thoughts from those who are here. Let's pray. Gracious Father, we give thanks to you for tonight. Oh Father, we thank you for your word. We thank you Father, that you give us opportunities like this to study that word. We know Father, that we are but scratching the surface of the, the treasures of, of your word. Especially for our purpose, Father, to study domestic godliness. We thank you Lord, that we have, we have your truth and we pray that this truth would be written in our hearts. Help us Father, avail of the means to grow and remember the truth. As, as we um, conclude this study. Thank you Father, bless our time, in Jesus's name, amen. Okay, so as usual, we'll spend some time for Q and A or for thoughts or comments, feel free. You could just unmute yourself if you, if you have one, you could just speak directly lang. Okay, hi Christina, go ahead. I can't hear you, I'm not sure if it's just me or. Sit my headset, yeah. Hello, can you guys hear her?
No, no.
Wala, wala, can, I think it's on your end, we can't hear you Christina. Baka, your Bluetooth, yeah. The, the others could step in also, if you have, if you have a question or a thought. Sorry, ah, kaya parang, there's a technicality on your end. Wala, no. Maybe you could type it nalang, yeah. So God willing, next week, uh, the author, Sir William Goudge, will begin a new argument. Um, so in the past weeks, in fact months, we've been seeing. Uh, an unpacking of the love of Christ and redemption. He's gonna focus na on the argument to love Christ as you love your own body. So, it's gonna be a transition next week's verse, okay?
Pastor.
Go ahead.
You didn't spend time on the baptism for, for Pastor Lino, I'm just curious. Uh, ano 'yung point niya doon sa baptism in relation to domestic godliness, if that's okay to ask?
Yeah, he, um, in this part actually, uh, he doesn't mention much on domestic godliness. Baptism and, and even, even this current passage, the considerations in our PowerPoint. Or, uh, I was the one who drew that out. Because his single purpose is to, uh. Just really unpack uh, those aspects of salvation. So if you read the one on baptism, he spends time on the importance of baptism. Uh, he has the note on the abuse of the ordinance of baptism. So yeah, that's why I did not.
Thank you Pastor, it's really encouraging, na, you have this hope.
Yeah.
Kasi nga, there's a lot of discouragement, especially as you see your plus.
Yeah.
Parang, is this something na, can we really? Can, is that, is this something na, will, will be blessed? Especially na parang, you know na, na, you, you're so weak as, as someone who parents. Pero yun, it's not, it's not naman na the Lord expected us to be perfect. We, we are striving for perfection pero. And we're still depend, we're really dependent on the Lord as we pursue. The godly parenting, thank you Pastor for tonight.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you, Deacon Bench. A a quick note on on baptism, because that comes from that one Ephesians five, sanctify her with the uh washing of water with the word. Uh the interpretation of washing with water, um I I'll just say this because na mentioning Deacon Bench, um is is not, not everybody, not everyone agrees that it's narrowed to specifically baptism. Uh the imagery of the washing of water, especially from the Old Testament, speaks of the washing away of our sins. Um so, uh it is, and in fact, I'm more inclined to that than the more narrowed limitation to baptism na it it speaks of the washing of our sins by the blood of Christ. Uh so just a quick note on that. Um so Christina typed her her message here, uh meron po akong, sorry for my my reading, huh? Meron po akong kailala na she is a professing Christian, but the family is saying na iba yung ugali niya sa home. I know we are not the judge pero po dapat ang response sa family. And I know we are not the judge, pero po dapat ang, how should she respond to the family? Alright, how should she respond to the family as we are to a body of Christ? So, uh I'll just clarify and then you could just thumbs up if I I got it right or clarify to chat. Na Christian sia, so she's, you're you have a professing Christian friend and her family says that she's a different person at home, alright? So she's a different person at home. Um so, uh what should your professing Christian do, a professing Christian friend do, or what should you do? Ikaw, for her. Okay, how could you help her uh in this situation, no? Um so, well, fir- first of all, I don't know the full picture. Uh there could be possibilities, no, different possibilities of what's happening here. Um so I'll just say what the possibilities are and you should, you you could, you could assess and guide and and see her actual situation. Because I I don't know the full picture. Uh the first possibility is it's true, alright? That's the first possibility. It's possible, and sadly that happens, that there are people who appear very Christian outside or in the church, but in the home they're very different. And even if that's an unbelieving family, let's say, uh it is still possible that she is a different person at home. So that, so i- in other words, posible na valid ang sinabi nila. It it's possible that it's valid. So in cases like that, you have to be very discerning. Is the professing Christian, maybe she's not truly Christian. Maybe she thinks that being a Christian is just being proper in front of Christian friends and before the church, but in the home, you know, ibas ya. So in that case, of course, you it's harder because self-deceived if she really believes she's a Christian and depende how close you are to her, is she part of the church, does she hear regular preaching of the word? She she should be called out for that um in the in the right opportunity as you see fit. But there are also other situations na, again, still the same, valid, she's a different person, but she's a struggling Christian. So toto, she's a real Christian. But, you know, because of remaining sin and because of immaturities, uh they are not as watchful with their lips, with their actions at home. And so in cases like that, even if it's valid, of course, we have to still apply the gospel bomb and 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 tell her, na sister, again, depende how close you are to her or to him. Um and if they, if there's a pastor over them, then then you have to encourage them. Na, you know, your Christian walk extends to the home, domestic godliness is part. Your witness to your unbelieving family is important. And hopefully through the means of instruction and encouragement, sometimes even rebuke, uh then then hopefully the Lord could arrest the situation. Uh in times like that, now she's truly Christian and it's a valid, it's a valid complaint by the family. Is it redeemable? That's the question, no? I- i- can she still have a Christian witness? I think one thing that could be a very good testimony to the gospel is when a person sins and a person is different at home and confesses it to their family members and 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 say, "I'm very, I really repent, I'm very sorry and I repent that I am this way, this is not what a Christian should do." The Lord could use that to restore her credibility and to even share the gospel to the unbelieving family. Because they will see that the gospel is not about people who made themselves right to be, you know, like worthy before God, but it's for sinners like you and I. And confessing it will, could help. It's not a guarantee, it's not a guarantee because the human heart no responds differently, but that's the right thing she should do, I think. Uh that's the right thing she should do. Another scenario is it's it's not right. Let's say they're just, they're just being so bad with her assessment of her. Now she's different at home pero it's it's a it's a slanderous uh uh thing, no? And maybe because uh they they are angry against the gospel and so they're just, they're just uh venting it on 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 the Christian, and that happens a lot. Uh they are, Christians have been accused of great things. You remember in history where where uh they 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 blame Christians for, because they did not worship the gods of the nation of 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 the place. And so they blame Christians for calamity, for pestilence, because the gods are angry because they're worshiping Christ. And so there's that fact that Christ said in the Sermon on the Mount, that they will falsely accuse you of things. And so in that case, I mean, she she really needs encouragement, that's very discouraging, especially if the Christian is trying her best to to witness and they still, you know, magnify the smallest thing and say, "Ah, she's a hypocrite" and, you know, kawawa because there's enough sin in us where people could blow up to to say, "Ah, you're you're a different person." Uh in in that case, she she might need reminders and comfort, but still reach out to the family and and do what she can, do what she has to do. It goes back to domestic godliness. If she's a daughter, if she's a wife, or if that's a husband or a son, the things that are expected of them in the home by the grace of God, even if if they're being spoken against, they 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 should, they should strive all the more to be salt and light. Alright, so it's it's very broad. I I hope one answers, one answers that. Uh see, Deacon Bench says, "Just a thought while listening. Uh that's why domestic godliness is such a help, yes? It can be easy to have high feelings of the Lord in a church context among peers of the same high spirits. The home is a very humbling mirror of how we are and who who we are, how we are really doing. And it grounds us in a sober assessment and should drive us more and more to the cross, yes." Yes. Okay. Alright, I think we could conclude unless there's one more question or thought. Okay, alright, I think I think we're good for for tonight. Thank you so much, guys, for uh resuming with us. And and I hope, I hope the the Lord sustains you through this long week. Uh sa mga taga sebo, um if, I I hope you're safe also after the the earthquake last week. Um hope everything is is fine for you and your family. Good night. We could conclude now. Good night, guys.
Night, everyone.
Night.
Thank you. Night, pastor. Thank you very much.
Good night. Deacon Bench, take care.
Hi, sir.
Hi, sir.
Thank you. Hi.
Hi, King.
Where's Maya?